Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Can you hear me now?
We will call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioner's Human Services Committee. Role call, please.
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Otamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathaw.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Present. I'd like to, everybody stand, please, who pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens, oh, excuse me, dis- or deletions, changes?
Make a motion to...
Report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard?
I'd like to talk about landfill topic.
That will come up, but not under this topic, okay? But it will come up, and you'll hear that when it gets...
You want to explain to them the procedure?
Yeah, the procedure, did you already fill out a card over there?
No.
There is one over there, and if you would do that, and then you can actually pass it at the end down there, and along.
For Howard.
Yep. Mr. Heideman there will take care of that. Anyone else would like to, for this committee, like to speak? Okay, moving on, any updates? Conceptual initiatives? New business? Item A, library board appointment.
I'd make the motion.
I would support that motion for Chrisenberry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Library closing request.
I would make a motion that we move on to the full board, the library closing requests. Support.
Move and support it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, other human service matters to be brought? Okay, under information only, we have public health points of interest, April 2013.
Make a motion to receive and file packets.
Second.
Move and support it to receive and file packets, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to call to order, please, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, if the clerk will take the role, please.
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Otamian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greathaw.
Present.
Additions and deletions and changes to the agenda, we have an executive session listed as 2A, that we will move down to Section 11.
Move that, we accept the agenda with that.
Second. I have a motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, citizens to be heard, are there any citizens wishing to address judiciary and public safety? Hearing none, I see no updates, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen?
I have one.
I knew you would have.
I was remiss, I should have mentioned it on the last meeting, and just wanted to comment that...
Too late now.
Jeff Bohm did an outstanding job as one of the panelists for the expansion of the Medicaid, and the impact it would have on the county.
Very good.
Did a good job, great job.
Thank you, both of you. Any other updates? Conceptual initiatives? None? No old business, under new business, item A is the proclamation recognizing correction Deputy Mary Dorsey for 25 years of service. I believe that we have all signed that proclamation, and it will be presented from somebody at the Sheriff's Department in the future.
I'll move proclamation.
Second.
Support that.
Okay, I have a motion and a support on the proclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7B is the bulletproof vest program grant application from the Sheriff's Department. They are going to request a number of, they do it every year, they're going to request a number of vests, and as far as the money goes, that's how many vests they'll get. They run out of money, then they stop getting vests, works that way.
Will we send this to the full board?
Motion?
Support.
And a support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, goes to the full board. 7C, Recovery Act Burn JAG 2009 grant agreement with prosecuting attorney. There is a match on this one, gentlemen, but it's in his budget.
I'll move that this item be moved to the full board agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a support to move it on to the full board, any discussion?
This is the same program that we had in our agenda for application in the last couple of months.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Just as a note, he was also looking for another grant that had no match to it, but we fell short on that particular request, so... Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this on to the full board?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, goes to the full board. 7D, 2010 Homeland Grant Security Agreement.
Move that we send this to the full board?
Support.
I have a motion and support, questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Otamian?
In this report, it appears that we're signing the agreement, but we've already spent the money? Is that correct? Is that how these grants work? Jim?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Sometimes the applications and the forms come later, applications late, sometimes you also wait for the possible things we've already purchased and sold.
This won't cause any problem in terms of the eligibility of the expense, thank you. You see this as a regular occurrence a lot, that these things are a couple of years behind?
Especially with...
Couple of years, this is the 2010 Security Grant Program, and this is 2013.
They just closed out 2009 just recently.
Oh, well.
Good question, though, good catch. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, hearing none. Motion to move this on to the full board.
We already have that?
Yeah, I'm calling for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, goes to the full board. Are there any other judiciary and public safety matters, gentlemen? Information only, there's nothing receive and file, I'm ready for that motion.
So, move.
Support. Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move we go into executive session and adjourn following executive session.
Support. I have a motion and support to go to executive session and adjourn following that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gentlemen.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Otamian.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathaw.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as present.
Move.
And moved by Commissioner Greathaw, second to Commissioner Rushing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Citizens to be heard, Mr. David Nowicki, if you would go to podium, and just for the record, you have three minutes, and I think he'll be posting the three minutes, there it is, so...
Thank you for hearing me, I'm Dave Nowicki, I've lived on Smiths Creek Road a mile from the landfill for over 60 years, and I've known that place since before it was at landfill. And we probably, everything at landfill is fantastic, you know, their recycling efforts are very good, eliminating waste, but bringing more waste in to run a power plant isn't the way to go. First of all, I've worked as severs for 22 years, I passed that one over in New Haven, I grassed it there for the last 22 years, and watched that start about the size of the dump, or I should say landfill, in Smiths Creek, where it is right now, 22 years, it looks like Mount McKinley. And that's what's going to happen if we keep progressing in the way we're doing it right now. We're going to start with one power plant, and we're going to start with another one, and another one, keep bringing more trash in. These 18-wheelers that they bring in over there in New Haven, I pass every day, they have about 40, I think 40 tons of garbage in them, they compress these, like those compressed, these garbage cylinders behind stores where they have the ram and it presses it in there, that's how they do these big trucks, they press it in there as much as they can get in there. And the county roads right now are bad anyway, and Smiths Creek Road, being a farming community with farm tractors going down that road all the time, it's a very busy road. And I watched that bridge at Smiths Creek, Pine River Road there, it was replaced since I lived there, and that's one of the newer bridges in this county. Also, that road, it just, I don't feel it can handle the pure traffic from, you know, their trash trucks coming down that road. I don't know which way they would go if they'd come down Will Center Road, there's another bridge on their side, the leisure there, and it hasn't ever been replaced, and you can't hardly, barely get two cars through that. You know, and then Canadian traffic, you can't, you're not going to be able to regulate that after a while, that's going to get out of hand, we're going to have another Mount McKinley, we're going to have environmental issues, we're going to have road problems, the water, all the way around, and I hunted around that landfill for years, and it's all swamp land around there. There's a lot of creeks, there's ponds right located alongside of that, there's a lot of runoff, and that runoff is eventually going to get to our lakes. And the bigger it gets, the worse it's going to get. And I just, basically my concern, my years of time being there and seeing how everything's grown in both landfills, and I think, you know, you get Canadian traffic in here, I mean, I think we're doing the right thing on recycling. We can do it probably better and be an example to everybody, instead of bringing more, everybody's trash into our area.
Sir, your three minutes is up.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks, thank you for allowing me to speak.
That's...
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we do have an update on the gas collection system.
Good evening. Move.
First item that I have in front of you tonight, there's a number of them, is an update on our landfill gas collection system. We have in our budget to spend approximately $50,000 this year to improve the gas collection system on the landfill, primarily to keep it within regulatory compliance and for the purposes of ensuring a smooth flow of gas to our energy plant that is on site. What we have seen over, since about the first of the year, is sort of a steady decline in the amount of gas that we've been collecting, and that's due to a number of primarily physical reasons. Differential settlement, gas wells, which pinch them off, so the pumps aren't able to pump the liquid out of them, thereby cutting off gas flow. We've had some, a couple small header issues where the pipe will settle, again, differentially with other areas, creating a belly, condensate from the gas will collect in that belly and really restrict the flow of gas through that pipeline. So, we have solicited for drilling of seven new gas wells at the landfill. We put a bid package out last week and are asking drillers to respond to that. I had hoped, due to the urgent nature of the gas, I don't want to take any chances, frankly, with gas going below where it needs to be for the gas plant to run at 100% efficiency. So, I've got that process underway, and I'm here this evening to let you know that that's happening, and my intention is to bring a contract to you in two weeks to the full board for the drilling of these gas wells, for your approval. We have some preliminary numbers from talking with well drillers, we're looking at likely bids around or under a $20,000 mark to put these new wells in. There's some additional money spent with our onsite operators and my operations man to support that operation and to correct the header issues that we have. All told, we're probably looking at on the order of $35,000 of expenditures to improve what we have right now and make sure the gas keeps flowing. So that is my update, again, I don't have any bids to present to you tonight, I'll be receiving those next week, and my request is that I be able to bring those in front of the full board in two weeks for your approval on my recommendation for a contract.
Any questions for ma'am regarding this issue?
Matt, the 20,000, that was for, all the wells are per?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
How many wells are you talking?
Seven, about 400 vertical feet of drilling among the seven gas wells.
That's 20,000 is all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I understood it was the seven wells and the manifold system, too.
The 20,000 or less is a quote, just for the well driller. When you add in the other costs associated for materials...
Oh, putting in the manifolds for the wells.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? David Rushing?
I used to be a well driller, previous life, after the railroad. You said 400 feet for 70 wells? Matt, there are only going to be 60 feet.
Excuse me?
400 vertical feet.
Approximately.
Seventy.
Seven.
Seven.
Okay.
Seventy, seven.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Any other updates from Commissioners regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives for environmental and public works matters?
Yes. You have one? Yes, just would like to, we've talked a number of times about a joint meeting between the county planning commission and the Board of Commissioners, the planning commission is in the process of updating the county's master plan. There's a couple of dates that have been thrown out, if you could write these down, check your calendars, and get in touch with Jenny Posey and let her know what dates would be available for you. We're looking at August 8th, or August 22nd. So that kicks them out quite a ways, and hopefully your calendars are free on one of those days. So just let Ms. Posey know what date would be best for you, and we'll continue working on scheduling that joint meeting.
Yeah, as your representative on metropolitan planning, we have to update that plan every five years, and so this is the year to get it updated. Okay, any old business? Seeing none, on to new business. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan application.
Commissioners, there's a memo and a PowerPoint presentation that was included in your packets for this evening's meeting, I'll be working through that presentation and summarizing the memo. As a point of background, oh, and I might also mention, Erin Berish was CTI and Associates, was the primary person who helped administer our first SRF loan, in the amount of about $12.7 million. She's very in, she has a deep knowledge of the ins and the outs, the rules and the regulations and the process for SRF funding, so if there are any questions that I don't feel qualified to answer that may come up, I'm going to ask Erin to assist me to answer those questions. The memo in front of you basically lays a little of the background, a little bit of history, and four years ago, we applied for and were granted state clean water revolving fund loan monies in the amount of $12.7 million. And for those of you on the board at the time, you're very aware, that covered the leachate pretreatment system, a three-part system, improvements to our gas collection system, the construction of a gas-to-energy building to house a conversion process for that energy, and to fund previous and future bioreactor work in Cell 3 being done under our RDDP, which is a research, development, and demonstration project permit. We accepted, we applied for and accepted S2 grant monies, now this is, S2 grant monies are associated with the SRF folks. The grant monies we obtained a couple years ago in the amount of about $246,000, 10% match from the county, or the landfill fund, were for planning and design purposes for future bioreactor expansion. One of the conditions, well, I won't get ahead of myself, but we have spent all of about $80,000 of that $250,000, and some of that money was used to prepare, I'll be showing you the project plan, which is the first step in the new loan application process. Expanding the septic bioreactor at the landfill is something that we've been considering and talking and have been wanting to move forward with all along. We've had amazing success with the first phase of bioreactor work in Cell 3, we've seen great gas production, we'd like to continue doing that at the landfill, to continue that good gas production, and realize the other benefits from doing bioreactor work, namely savings in money from additional settlement in the landfill, which is creating airspace that we can fill later, revenue from septic receipt, and of course royalties we get from the gas plant, from the gas that we send them, which they convert to electricity. The Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund gives low-interest loans to municipalities for typically clean water projects. Most often, these are sewer interceptors, sewer replacements and upgrades, wastewater treatment plant, major equipment that needs to be fixed, these funds will go to municipalities who are cash-strapped to help them execute those projects. With us, our payback period is a 20-year payback on the loan, that's the standard thing, and our interest rate on our first SRF loan is 2.5%. We anticipate something just above $500,000 a year in debt service payments once we start repaying that principal on the first loan, which should be in 2014. Up to this point, we've been covering some of the interest generated on the monies we've received. And as part of that 12.7, 5 million has been granted as loan forgiveness under that loan, it was 40% of the principal that was granted to us by the Clean Water folks for that project.
Can I interject something?
Yes, sir.
Quick to Matt, just when you talk about the $500,000 payback, hence we never had the gas collection piece of it, which we generate X amount of dollars there, and then we used to pay a ton of money to haul the leachate offsite and get that processed, so we talked about, so we had significant other, A, no income from the gas collection, B, we had a significant expense in removing the leachate.
That's correct. I just covered this slide, I guess I did get ahead of myself a little bit there. We've spent of the 12.7 million in principal on the first loan, about $11.8 million. So we are approaching the full amount of the loan, but we're not quite there yet, and we may not ever get there, just because contracts came in under budget, engineering and administration has not ended up costing as much as we projected it. So there's still more money to come, but we probably will not get to the full amount of the loan. And again, the S2 grant, as I detailed earlier, involved a 10% community match. The grant monies covered vertical expansion work, as you know, we have a vertical expansion permit application into the state where as we speak, which we should be receiving word on in about a month for approval of that. These S2 grant monies incorporated future bioreactor design into that expansion permit, therefore they were applied to that work. As I've mentioned to you before, we are going to be applying for a new RDDP, which will cover, which I'll get to that, but it'll cover septic bioreactor operation in places other than Cell 3 on the landfill, will allow us to expand our operation, if you like. The first step in the loan application process is to write a project plan. The project plan identifies the needs for the project, evaluates alternatives for doing this work, evaluates the environmental impact of doing this project, and of course, an estimated cost. The, simply put, the need for the project is defined as, we need to expand our bioreactor. If we're going to continue to support the disposal of septic in a licensed facility in this county, then we need to keep the bioreactor going so that septic can be allowed to be brought us and disposed in a good fashion, to relieve burden on wastewater treatment plants, and hopefully avoid septic going in ditches and on lands. In new SRF loan that I am proposing, that we apply for, these are the components that we're going to seek monies to cover. First and foremost, well, not foremost, but first is a new septic treatment and disposal unit, essentially the Cell 4 landfill cell that we'll be constructing in 2014. Of course, the infrastructure associated with getting the septic to where it needs to go, pumps, piping, things of that nature. Upgrades to the management system, the handling system for the septic now, one of the struggles we've had and have addressed is the amount of suspended solids in the liquid that comes to the site, and getting as much of that out as possible so that injection can proceed smoothly and doesn't essentially clog our lines up. So we're looking to upgrade that piece of our system. And of course, as long as we're under an RDDP umbrella, since that is a research project specially permitted by the state of Michigan, there is a lot of monitoring and data analysis that we need to do to show, to prove out what we're doing and why it's a good thing. So the monies we're going to ask for cover all of these things. Graphics, no charts, but some pictures for you. What you see here, the yellow highlighted system is what we're currently doing. We received septic... We receive septic at the front of the landfill in our receiving station. There's over a 2,000-foot force main which transmit that process septic to the top of the landfill hill. At the top of the hill, there are a couple of storage tanks and then injection lines coming from that storage facility into our test cell, Cell Three. With the RDDP and the expansion to the bioreactor system, the next phase of that would be to take septic and inject it in existing cells Two, Six, and Seven, which are partially full right now. We have some piping infrastructure already constructed. We'd like to construct a little more, but some of the monies from this new SRF loan will pay for that infrastructure and perhaps a lift station to get liquid from Point A to Point B. Yes, sir.
And the green, or the yellow is Cell Three?
That's correct.
And then green is Two, Six, and Seven?
That's correct.
Where is Four going to be?
I'm getting to that with my next slide. Cell Four lies immediately to the south of Cell Three, and it's here shown in the bottom left-hand corner of this graphic. So the third piece will be to construct that cell liner, base liner system.
Which one is Tiltal working on now?
The extension to Cell Seven right now. And then after we start getting refuse into Cell Four, once we get a sufficient amount, we'll start installing the infrastructure into that waste mass as it's built over a fairly long period of time, just as we did with Cell Three. And hopefully, about mid-2016, we would start septic injection into the Cell Four area. So we're looking at a fairly long-term project here. This is a flow chart kind of showing the same thing. We get septic from surrounding communities into our receiving facility at the landfill. And currently, under the current RDDP, that's being injected into Cell Three, and the additional gas generated in that cell is being taken to the gas-to-energy facility. The next piece, again, under the new RDDP permit, as I mentioned, we're going to apply for, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with this loan request, is to take septic into Cells Two, Six, and Seven. And to build Cell Four and then run a bioreactor project in Cell Four, again, with all the off-gas going to our gas-to-energy facility. As I mentioned, we received 40% loan forgiveness four years ago with our first SRF funding package. That's because our project qualified as a green project. Essentially, there's a number of categories that can get a project such as this green status, if it's got some type of green infrastructure, if there's some amazing water or energy efficiencies, and this is all wastewater things, or if it's environmentally innovative. And the environmental innovation category is how we qualified our first project for loan forgiveness by virtue of calling it a green project. There is subsidy still available. The monies that are given as loan forgiveness come from the federal government and they're earmarked specifically for forgiveness grants, if you will, to municipalities who are tempted to do green projects. There's still money left in the state of Michigan to apply to these projects as they come in. Last two years, there weren't a whole lot of green projects available relative to the amount of money that the state had to use, so the projects that did get funded under the green tag received 50% loan forgiveness, fully half of the principal. We don't know what is going to be planned or what exactly would be available for the funding period we would be putting in for. However, the state does say on their website that they anticipate green reserve monies being available and some amount of loan subsidies coming for those types of projects. Best-case scenario, we get a full, we get everything we asked for funded, and we have received 50% loan forgiveness on that loan. That's the best case. So how much money are we talking about with this loan application? These are very preliminary costs, and even since I developed this slide, things have been changed or in development. Erin is finishing up the project plan for submission and on May 6th, the draft project plan. And some of these costs are changing. I can tell you that the total cost, rather than I showing, is 5.2, is probably going to be closer to $6 million. There are some adjustments in each of these categories up and down as we're getting fine-tuned on the cost estimates, as the design is getting more fine-tuned. So worst-case scenario, there's no loan forgiveness, we're looking at a $6 million loan. I'm sorry, that's not worst-case scenario. There is the possibility the state might not agree to fund a landfill liner construction. We are arguing that it's not just a landfill liner, we're treating and disposing of residential septic. That's a clean water initiative. They agreed with that four years ago. So we believe that we may be able to get that funded. The best-case scenario, if we apply, are able to have, be given 50% loan forgiveness on the entire amount, could be a loan amount for payback on the order of $3 million as opposed to Six. So we do expect subsidy. We don't know how much. We don't know how many green projects may come in for evaluation. The more projects, the more money to be spread around between those projects. So we'll just have to see how all of that goes. Last thing for you, important deadlines we have to meet. They have a very strict and rigid timeline for submission to get these projects funded. This is our timeline for the funding we're looking for in the second quarter of 2014. There is a pulp of note, there's a public hearing that we're going to be advertising in the Times-Herald on Sunday for June 6th, 2013, prior to the environmental committee meeting and your other committee meetings. Scheduled for 5:30 in the afternoon, I'll be doing a presentation. Here's the project, here's why we're doing it, open it up for public comment. And the other important thing, I'd like to note that the board will be asked to pass a resolution adopting a final project plan. The final project plan will be determined by things we're still getting back from other entities who are asked to weigh in on the project and whatever public comments we come in that we may need to be addressing. And that's the end of my presentation. And my request is then, is that we have the go-ahead from the board to pursue this SRF loan for funding of the things I've noted.
Commissioner Rushing?
I have a couple of questions. The 2% on the loan, is that going to be on the total 6 million or the 3 million?
That, well, on whatever the principal ends up being.
So if it's 50%, it'd be on 3 million or 6 million? Because we've got to figure that into the cost that we've got to pay back.
It would be on whatever principal we end up with. If our principal is 3 million, it would be on 3. If we don't get any loan forgiveness for some reason, it would be on 6.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that we give the go-ahead to Matt to go ahead and make the application for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Bell, supported by Commissioner Donlin. Any other discussion or questions for Matt? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay, motion carried. Okay, Matt, you want to go on to the next item on the agenda, which is landfill fee structure revisions?
Yes, I would like to, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Again, in your packet, there's a memorandum. I do have a presentation associated with this item, which you do not have, but I'll be presenting here. We've talked about this at some length in a number of different public forums, how that the landfill is in need of a course correction with respect to expenses and revenues to ensure that the landfill is financially solvent and in good shape moving forward in the years ahead. Some of the things that have been working against us to that end are that since 2004, our overall refuse volume from inside the county has fallen by about 30%. This is typical across the state. Most other, every other landfill in the state has seen a similar drop. The direct correlation to that is that landfill revenues have fallen by about the same percent, which you would surmise to be a likely thing. Since 1999, when a scale was installed at the landfill for the purpose of measuring tonnage of waste coming in, prior to that, it was by estimated volume, a fee schedule was developed saying, here's how much we're going to charge for these different waste streams on a per-ton basis. That fee structure has not been modified up or down since 1999. Prices that we were charging 15 years ago are the same prices we're charging today. Of course, everybody knows that we've had quite a bit of inflation, quite a bit of economic turmoil in the meantime. The consumer price index has actually gone up about 35% in that period. While there's not a direct correlation to our straight landfill cost for operating, handling the garbage, certainly, our costs have gone up over time. But in short, we have not kept up with the times with our fee structure. That is the main reason why I'm before the board tonight. One of the things that we have to look at, to be prudent operators of the landfill, is what our upcoming capital expenditures are going to be. This graphic in front of you lists those significant capital projects, which we plan on making at the landfill over the next six and a half years. Cell 7B is being constructed this year. Cell Four, we're planning on construction next year, and Cell Eight, probably in 2018. Those are the big-ticket items on this sheet. You can see we're due for a scale replacement. We've, I have that budgeted for next year. And you can see improvements to our gas and leachate systems over time. As things age, as the landfill grows, we have to necessarily spend money to keep up with the growth of the landfill and replace older aging components. All told, over the next seven years, we're looking at capital expenditures in excess of $5 million. So that's a pretty significant chunk. When planning for the future and deciding what to do with fees and revenues and expenses, there are certain variables that are really not under our control. These are some items that are under our state regulators' control. Approval of the expansion permit we have in their hands as we speak. Expanding our existing RDDP permit, which we were granted an extension in March, which will set us up for another three years with the bioreactor work in Cell Three.
And there's three more years after that?
Three more years available after that. And then we hit our 12-year cap. New RDDP permit, we will, it's our intention to submit for a new RDDP permit this year and have that permit in hand by the end of the year so that next year, we can start the septic bioreactor extension into Cells Two, Six, and Seven, excuse me, and then years down the road into Cell Four. And approval of an SRF loan application. We just went through what that was all about. But that's the DEQ's call to say yea or nay on these items. Things that are in control of this board are tipping fees, your direction for me to pursue additional volumes from outside the county. And also under your control is to tell me how much available resources or assets we need to have in the landfill fund. And I'll make this very simple. We have cash expenditures, we have non-cash expenditures that go into our, into our books every year, depreciation, cell depletion, things like this, that aren't writing, we're writing checks for, but get counted against us. So after you take all the cash and non-cash expenses, you put them against our revenue, you look at what's left over, that is the amount of money that in essence is our liquidity. It's our buffer if we have environmentally, environmental issues that crop up on the landfill that we have to address. It's our buffer if there's some other emergent, urgent need in the county for funding, which there's no other funding source for. So you are in control of telling me how much is a good margin to have in available assets. We have to plan ahead. The next few slides are simply a schedule of important items in the life of my landfill, our landfill, that are coming up, important to me. Some of these have already occurred. You can see in April, we're identifying additional waste sources. We are currently in the process of identifying other waste streams to come into the landfill, specifically from Canada. Another one of those waste sources is the potential of Lapeer County. Lapeer County has contacted us with the desire to bring us some of their waste. I know that Jeff Donaldson is trying to get a meeting scheduled with our Solid Waste Management Planning Committee to address that request. If we were to take that waste, it would be a process, 12 to 18 months, because we have to modify our solid waste management plan. We'll be getting, we'll be beginning Cell 7B construction on Monday. That construction should take two to three months. We're hopefully going to receive our expansion permit in about a month, and that will make a big difference for us in the future long-term life of our facility. It more than doubles our site life in terms of volume available to fill, that expansion does. July, as we talked in the SRF presentation, the project plan needs to be submitted to the state for funding in second quarter next year. August, I have us down for receiving new waste streams. If it works out, we identify those streams, we can come to a contractual agreement. Hopefully, that sooner rather than later. We need both volume and additional fees, which we'll get to here momentarily. Hopefully, the, our new RDDP permit we receive at the end of the year, that will allow us to expand the bioreactor into the existing Cells Two, Six, and Seven adjacent to Cell Three in the beginning of next year. In January 2014, I have a line here saying, "SRF environmental impact determination." That is the last big piece of evaluation from the state in determining whether or not they'll grant us a loan for funding the activities we'd like to do. We will know in January if we are going to receive a loan and how much we'll be receiving the loan, how much the amount of the loan will be for. I'm not sure if we'll know loan forgiveness at that point. I seem to recall last time that changed the closer it came to loan closing, which was sometime in May, I believe, will be in May of 2014. So at that point, we wouldn't know about loan forgiveness or not. And the last thing I really want to say here is that in March next year, annual landfill financial review. I'm asking you, and we'll get to it momentarily, to adjust our fee structure up and raise our prices, if you will. But, and we, I'm asking for a significant increase and recommending a significant increase. This isn't something we want to do every 15 years because it's fairly painful. I don't know that that shows that we're managing ourselves properly. So next March, we're going to go through this process again. We're going to see if we need to make any course corrections on our projections. We're going to evaluate what happened in the previous year to see if what happened is what we thought happened. And we're going to come back to you, the board, and give you a little bit of report of that and perhaps a recommendation for fee increases or adjustments or waste volume adjustments moving forward. Again, we're talking about long-term projects with respect to future bioreactor expansion into Cell Four. We're looking between the years of 16 to 18 to build out that bioreactor expansion into Cell Four. So the loan- So the loan covers a long period of time. And at the current projections of additional waste to be brought in, how fast we're filling things up, how much airspace we have available in the cells that we've constructed, I'm targeting 2018 as the next significant cell construction after cell four. That timing will be dependent upon how much volume we actually receive, how our compaction is going, how our bioreactor is performing, a lot of different factors. But right now, we're looking at 2018 for the next major cell construction. So to the specifics, in the back of your memo, I have proposed pricing for two pieces. One is the commercial side of our business. The other is the private residential side of our business. The first table in front of you is proposed contract pricing for commercial waste haulers. And I don't have a graphic for this to put up, but it is in your packet. And you can see that I've got increases on a number of different waste streams, specifically commercial MSW, construction and demolition, street sweepings, contaminated soil. The amount of those increases was done in this fashion. First of all, it's to get us closer to and approaching what the market prices are for these different waste streams across the state. With our landfill consultant a couple of years ago, I'm sorry, with our landfill consultant, Jim Logston, a couple of years ago, we evaluated our immediate competitors and what their average tipping fees were, and they were on the order of thirty-five to forty dollars per ton. Currently, our average tipping fee, if I have that in here, the last time, because it changes depending upon different types of, I don't have it with me, but it's on the order of the low twenties, around twenty-two dollars per ton, an aggregate, average weighted tipping fee. Other municipal, excuse me, other municipally-owned landfills in the state, specifically Kent County, MOA, Montmorency, Oscoda, Alpena, share a joint landfill. Southeast Marion County in the southwest corner of the state. All of these landfills are in the thirty to thirty-five dollar per ton range for general commercial refuse. The rate increases I'm proposing here would bring our aggregate or our average tipping fee to, on the order of twenty-five dollars per ton. So twenty-five dollars compared with thirty to thirty-five, as much as forty dollars from our competitors, is still significantly below the market price that most other landfills are getting, so we're keeping it as low as we can. But remember, we're coupling that with some projections on increased volume from Canada. Of note, under MSW residential category, I've not proposed a price increase for MSW that comes from residential homes in the county. Done that for a couple of reasons. First of all, homeowners, taxpayers always feel the pinch of any increase you're going to make, and I realize that. Secondly, municipalities have contracts, existing contracts, those, I'm sorry, those municipalities that do have contracts with haulers are typically somewhere in the middle of them, at the beginning, at the end, but they range from three to five years in time. So the thought is, before we consider an increase to residential MSW tipping fees, let's evaluate what we got, let's hit the other areas that we need to, to get us the additional revenue we need to. And we'll consider that and plan ahead and give notification ahead of time and have these discussions with the municipalities rather than just saying, here's the increase, it's going to happen on such and such a date. Some thought into that and some consideration for those municipalities. The second table, after the commercial side, is a table which is proposed gate pricing for our residential customers. As I noted in the memo, the waste that private citizens drive up and bring us in their pickup truck or in a trailer constitutes less than four percent of our total volume of refuse coming in, so it's just a little piece. You've got both my proposed gate pricing for that material plus our existing rate sheet that we have established for residents. What I've done here is simplified our existing rate sheet, I think greatly. Made it quicker and easier for a resident to know how much they're going to pay when they come in, make it easier and more efficient for the ladies at the landfill to review, look at the waste streams, and bill their customers. Hopefully, it's a big improvement. The net change in how much revenue comes in on that four percent, I expect to be minimal. This is not done to increase those prices, it's simply done to simplify the existing rate structure, which I think we were in need of doing. So I'm proposing that in addition to the commercial fee structure that I have in front of you. In summary, to keep our landfill financial picture solvent, to plan ahead, to keep us healthy, we need a combination of fee increase, not just this year, but we need to look at that moving forward, and we need to increase the volumes. That will not only keep us in good financial standing, keep us healthy, it also will support us continuing our bioreactor work that we've invested so much in, in this county, to keep that septic receiving station open, to help keep our water resources clean, to bring additional gas to that gas plant, to maintain the clean energy, the renewable energy that's being generated today, to maintain that moving forward. So my recommend, actually, my request is that this committee take those, accept those proposed fee structures and recommend approval of them to the Board of Commissioners. I have the date of one January 2015, I'm sorry, 2014, for enacting that fee structure. So there is a heads-up for the county at large, for the communities, and for our commercial businesses.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? Commissioner Tomlin?
Matt, in your memo, on the second page, about a quarter down the page, there's a tipping fee increase, and in the second sentence, it says, "It is my recommendation that the fee schedule be adjusted to incorporate a five-dollar-per-ton increase for in-county municipal solid waste, construction, demolition debris, and special waste effective January first, 2014." But if we look at the chart, the chart breaks down MSW commercial and residential, and the chart does not show an increase for MSW residential, correct?
That is correct. And I could have been, should have been clear in my memo that that was not a piece I was recommending increasing at this time.
So when you talked later in your memo about the waste received on our residential side, you're talking about waste that individual residents would bring to the landfill?
That's correct.
This is not, this is not the residential waste that would be picked up by contractors and delivered to the landfill?
Yes, there's a terminology overlap there. That's correct.
And so when we think about, the majority of residential waste comes through contractors, not by delivery, so there really is not a significant, there is no impact to people who are having their waste picked up by a contractor and delivered to the landfill?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bone?
Yeah, I just want to make some comments. I've got a bunch of notes here, so I'm probably going to be all over the board with it. Number one, many of you know that Smiths Creek Road, that we did receive the Tiger Grant, Smiths Creek Road is getting redone from Wadams Road out to the landfill. That was a three-point million, three-point-two-million-dollar project that was awarded. They're going to be starting that relatively quick here. When you talk about trash volumes, many of you know, in 2003, we were at 362,000 tons of trash. Currently, today, we're at roughly 172,000 tons. Any of the proposals that we're making, whether it be via trash to Lapeer County or any Canadian refuges, to get us back up to those volumes that we have seen before and we have seen that amount of traffic. When you start talking about Smiths Creek landfill, I'm very familiar with it because my friend is a township supervisor. Smiths Creek landfill takes what, not Smiths Creek, Pine Tree. Pine Tree takes 1.7 million tons of trash in the course of a year. Okay, so you're talking 200 trucks or so. So the type of volumes that we're looking for would roughly be, if you said 100,000 tons of trash, that's 10 trucks roughly per day of the 30 to 35 tons. Because if you talk about a 40-ton truck, if you go to Pine Tree Acres, the larger trucks, they actually have a lift that physically lifts the truck to dump the trucks. So if you ever see the big green trucks at Stafford's running, those trucks wouldn't even be able to come in our landfill because of the size and the way that they're actually set up to dump. Lapeer County, talking roughly 80,000 tons of trash total in Lapeer County. I know we would need to amend that solid waste plan with them to look at trash. It's a very small volume that would come out of Lapeer, and I think another big piece of it with Lapeer is the septic piece. As we increase the bioreactor, we are going to have a need for more septic out there. So that's, that's really one, I think, one of the driving reasons behind the Lapeer County piece of it. Other alternatives, we have a fixed asset out there. I think if you're going back to Howard's Common, if you would have been sitting here 10 years talking about Canadian trash, you would have been going berserk. But here we are today that we have to get volumes back to levels that we need to be at to maintain our asset. If we don't get to that level, the other thing, the other options, and we've talked about it, and I don't think anybody wants to go there, but you would ultimately have to get out of the landfill business. And I can tell you, if you sell that landfill, you will look like the next Pine Tree Acres. So we have to manage this asset. I appreciate Matt coming in, putting all the numbers, facts, and figures down, and, you know, we got to review this. Just because if we decide to do some of the things with the Canadian piece, this doesn't mean we sign up for life on this either. So, I mean, if the, if the landfill business changes in another three to five years, hence, we'll review it then.
Okay. I guess at this time, we can continue discussion. I would entertain a motion to go ahead and move these recommended landfill fee structure changes to the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion to send it on to the full board.
Okay. Commissioner Graytop has made the motion. Second by Commissioner Riley. Okay. Any other discussion or questions for Matt? Commissioner?
And I just want to reiterate, because this is a major concern, like one of our residents brought up today, but if you go back to 2003, when we had our high level of trash, the additional truck traffic is still going to be less, but there's going to be a concern that there's going to be these massive trucks coming in, one after another. That's not going to happen. We're still not going to meet the same traffic we had in previous years, just from in-county trash. So I think that needs to be stressed out there. In addition, the Tiger Grant, that road's going to be completely rebuilt, and we got the money from the federal government to do that, and that road will be more than capable of handling the actual weight that will be there. But it still won't beat the previous one we had there.
And we did have those numbers. Many of you have seen them from the Road Commission, gave us the numbers of the traffic that did travel down that road, Kurt submitted all that, so.
And if I might interject with respect to the additional volumes, we can't take an additional 100,000-plus tons a year. We can't take that rate today. We simply don't have the space available. It would be a gradual increase to get on that order, in that level. And that final level isn't a hard recommendation for me right now anyway. Would have to see how things go. This year, we're able to take probably, I'm estimating, a six-truck, a six-truck-a-day level of additional refuse, assuming we're coming in about 37, 38 tons per load. That will fill us up. We're building cell seven B, that will open up at the end of the year, we have more space. At that point in time, we can try to increase that volume, if we'd like to, to maybe eight or nine trucks a day. Ultimately, where we're looking at for volumes in the short term, in the three- to four-year period, has come up to about 120,000 tons today. That's my recommendation. That's where I'm pointing to. When cell four is open, we have a huge chunk of airspace that will have been created for us to utilize, but we don't want to fill it up all at once. We don't want to become a Pine Tree Acres, definitely not. So just wanted to put that out there.
Any other questions for Matt?
No, I don't have a question. I got a comment. I think as Chairman Bone said, you know, years ago, if you talked about Canadian trash, that was something that would really upset everybody. But some of us did take the opportunity to go up and meet with, at the federal building with border protection and also up the bridge and actually, understanding now, the manifest that they sent ahead of time, how the trucks are handled when they come across, and it certainly opened my eyes up to something that I did not know that they did up there. I felt a lot better. We spent some time in both federal building as well as at the bridge, and I come out of there with a whole different feeling about what's crossing our borders. And if it wasn't a good thing for our citizens of our county, in my feeling, my area, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of doing anything. But I have to say, I think it's the right way to go.
In other words, what you saw was they were addressing safety concerns regarding the materials coming over with their inspection processes?
Absolutely.
And certification processes?
Correct. I didn't realize that manifests had to be sent in an hour before the, any, a truck could cross the border. And the manifest tells who is coming, what's on it. It's actually, I was real impressed with the way that they handle it at the bridge. Very impressed.
Commissioner Graytop?
I was with Commissioner Riley and Bone that day. We looked at it, and the equipment that they have up there is really unbelievable, what they can tell what's in the truck when they go through those scanners, and they really truly do have some protocol set up there that is very, very safe for everybody. When this, when these trucks come in, everything gets scanned. They find anything out of kilter at all, they've got procedures to follow, they have secondary sites to go to, they even have a third site that they can send them to if they need to, and if they have to unload that truck full of garbage, they will do that. They really have set this up in a very protective way. And I do want to reiterate, or back up again with Commissioner Riley just said, I was very impressed with what I saw over there. And a final comment I want to make is, Matt, I thought your presentation, you've done a lot of these, this is by far the best one you've ever done.
Here's hoping I get better at it instead of worse.
I'm telling you, buddy, you, you're top-notch today on this one. You laid it out there pure and simple. I mean, even I can understand this one.
I'm just ready for graphics.
Any other questions for Matt? Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, this is for the full board in two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome, Matt. Have a good one. At this time, we have a Park and Recreation Commission alternate appointment. I think it's Mr. Don Shelton.
I move to see the full board. Support?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Don's on our Metropolitan Planning Commission too, by the way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I request some information, maybe from somebody that might have it on him so that I can take it to Mr. Foster, who he will be the alternate for?
You mean like contact information?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
We have a Smiths Creek landfill activities report included in our packet. We also have, are there any other environmental and public works matters that need to be considered? Seeing none, we have several information-only items. We have the NDOT letter considering, regarding the Harsons Island ferry transfer. We have the Harsons Island ferry transfer letter. We have a letter regarding the Harsons Island ferry transfer. We have park and recreation financial documents, and we also have a letter from Wales Township regarding the Girls' Music Festival proposal. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
And information materials regarding environmental and public works matters. It's been made by Commissioner Graytop, second by?
Myself.
Commissioner Riley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I would entertain a motion, be adjourned.
So moved. Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee, Board of Commissioners meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to accept it as presented.
I'll make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Craving citizens wishing to be heard. Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. We have no old business, I'd like to move on to new business. On 7A, equalization request for the manning table revision?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7B, manning table change for emergency management.
I move that this item be forwarded on to the full board meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say that this is a position that is a grant-funded position, and it may not be there in a few years, and speaking with Jeff Friedland, rather than hire somebody full-time, he thought it best if they went part-time with three people, kind of spread it out, and if this funding falls away, then it may fall away gradually. You don't have to give it a full-time person.
Could I make just a comment before we have a final vote on the manning table change for the Homeland Security? This is in regards to that grant, and I think they want that for final action. So if I could, I would like to make that for final action.
I'll, I'll amend my motion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're talking 7B?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a motion and second to make this for final action. Do we have any? Do we have any other discussions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any other Ways and Means matters?
I guess we had a scheduled workshop for next Thursday, but we're not going to have a workshop, so.
You need a motion to cancel the workshop. I would so move.
I would support that.
Any discussion?
Two meetings a month, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Do we have any other Ways and Means matters? Okay, we'll move on to information only.
I, I move that we receive and file packets regarding Ways and Means matters.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.